You push micro because you're talking. So now we are now...
On the English side.
On the English side. And you're gonna look up here. If you look over it, you can see I'm gonna be standing right there. And you're gonna say "test English", "take for the interest". And I'm gonna go like this saying that I've got the English. Then you're gonna... Testing English, one, two, three. Testing English, one, two, three. Check, one, two, one, two, three, four. Hey, 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 hey. One, two. Testing English, one, two, three. Testing English, one, two, three. Check, one, two.
What's the deal?
He was set on mic instead of line.
Oh, that would do it.
Check, one, two.
I don't understand that guy at all. Okay, so the bottom ones... Yeah, I know. Bottom one's gonna go on...
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats. We'll begin the meeting in one moment. We'll start the meeting in a minute. Merci.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Welcome back, Mr. Kanalakis. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce Tammy Laverty. Tammy has a long history of involvement with football, dance, and performing arts. She lived in Los Angeles for 11 years, where she honed her acting, singing, and dancing skills with the Merv Griffin productions, and was also involved in music videos and stage performances. She became a popular national anthem singer for a number of sports teams, including the Los Angeles Kings, the Los Angeles Dodgers, the Ottawa Senators, and the Ottawa Red Blacks. Tammy also worked in client services and marketing for a top investment firm in Pasadena, California. In 2009, Tammy returned to her hometown of Ottawa to launch a successful real estate career with Royal LePage, where she has achieved master sales awards in residential and commercial sales for 2013 and 2015. Tammy is also the founder and driving force behind Laverty Designs, which produces sports jersey dresses, and I really need one of those, for the NHL, the CFL, MLB, and the NFL. Tammy's interest in sports may come from her father, Ed Laverty, who is an Ottawa Sports Hall of Fame inductee, and pioneered the Ottawa Napaian Touch Football League, an organization with which Tammy is closely aligned. Tammy has an extensive network in the local community. She's involved in many charitable events and causes, including Fight for the Cure, the Max Keeping Foundation, Ringside for Youth, and School Box, where in February, her and I took part in building a school in Nicaragua with a number of other amazing Ottawa women. I first saw Tammy perform in a town square in Lyon, Nicaragua, in front of hundreds of people. Today, she's here to share her talent with all of us, but I have to tell you, Tammy's been suffering from the flu and cold for a number of days, so this is really a personal favor she's doing for me today. So please join me in welcoming Tammy Laverty as today's voice of council.
Thank you. Please bear with me if I sound like a bit of a frog, and please join in and sing our national anthem. Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all thy sons command. Qu'un bras s'est porté l'épée, et il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillants exploits. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you. Thank you.
Very, very much for that wonderful rendition of "Oh, Canada." Despite having the flu, you did a great job. At this time, I'd like to invite Alan Betty Arsenault to the podium for today's City Builder Award presentation, along with their city councillor, Mark Taylor.
I would also invite our councillor, Mark Taylor, to join us.
And Mark is right here. The Arsenals are longtime residents of Crystal Beach Lakeview. With a love for outdoor sports and a keen enthusiasm for their neighborhood, Alan Betty has been dedicated volunteers in their community for many, many years. Volunteering their time with the city's seasonal recreational branch, Alan Betty takes great pride in their care of the outdoor arena and three-sheet curling rink in Lakeview Park, and it is an amazing sight to see these three full-size curling sheets. With all the correct markings, and they host an annual Lakeview Outdoor Barnsfield that is always fully booked, and enthusiastic curlers from all over the city come to see these amazing sheets of ice. Lakeview Park's ice surfaces are notable in the community for more than just curling sheets. Al is well-known in the community as the first rink operator to get his boards in place and coax quietly ice out of an early cold snap. Al makes himself available 24/7, even trucking loads of ice shavings from nearby indoor arenas to make repairs to the ice after melt. Now that is dedication, Al. Thanks to Al and Betty, young children, seniors, and all those in between are fortunate to enjoy free, high-quality winter recreation in their backyards.
Thanks to Al and Betty, young children, seniors, and all those in between are fortunate to enjoy free, high-quality winter recreation in their backyards.
... to the Lakeview Park community and its residents. On behalf of your councillor, Mark Taylor, I'm very pleased to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award for this meeting. Bravo.
On behalf of Betty and I, I'd like to thank Mayor Watson for the kind words. I also want to thank Deputy Mayor Taylor for making the effort to nominate us for this award. And also, I want to thank our son Andrew and daughter-in-law Sarah and our first-grandson Nicholas for being here to share this with us. Our daughter, Deline, and son-in-law, Isaac, are back in Binghamton, where the Bee Sins live. They're expecting their first child any day now, so they couldn't be here with us. And also, my sister Mona wanted to come, but she called the way to look after her first granddaughter. Some of you may know Mona better as the former deputy treasurer, Mona Monckman. I have to admit, or we have to admit, that when we got the call last week from the mayor's office telling us that we've been selected for this award, we were in shock. It took us a couple of days to process this. It was quite humbling, and we truly are honored. Oftentimes, we get asked, why do you put in all this time, you know, the many hours that are required? And quite simply, the easiest answer is that we see it as our way to give back to the community. We're very fortunate to live in Crystal Beach, Lakeview community. We've made numerous friends over the years. We've been there now for 27 or 28 years, and we wouldn't live anywhere else for that matter. And it does take a lot of dedication and hard work, but at the same time, it takes a lot of help. We get a lot of help from local parent volunteers to come and give us a hand. We have a lot of help from our close, personal friends, particularly with the curling barnsfields, putting in the reins and all that stuff. It's a lot of work, and we get a lot of assistance. We also get a lot of support from the seasonal recreation office. If it wasn't for them, we couldn't do this. They're on the... They get a lot of complaints from me, crying for my boards, crying for my hoses and my water supply and whatnot, and they're always very quick to respond to that. And lastly, personally, I couldn't do this if I didn't get the moral support from my wife, Betty, and my son, Andrew, and my daughter, Deline. You know, a lot of personal sacrifices on their part. When I'm out there for these countless hours, they're back home covering for me and taking care of all the other business. I do this, it's a personal passion of mine, but again, if it wasn't for Betty and my son and daughter, we wouldn't be able to do it. So in closing, thank you very much for this award. We truly are honored, and it will be proudly displayed in our home. Thank you.
I'd now ask Chris Phillips. Many of you know, of course, Chris, he's a great member of our Ottawa Senators, to come forward as we make an announcement about the tragedy that took place and is taking place and unfolding in Chris's home community. Chris, thanks for being here. As many of you know, residents of Fort McMurray, Alberta are facing a natural disaster of an unprecedented scale.
The residents of Fort McMurray have been through a lot.
Citywide evacuation, including nearby communities. The affected land surface is estimated to 229,000 hectares, almost the size of Ottawa. With damage being assessed at historic levels, this natural disaster may become the costliest in Canadian history. I'd like to congratulate and thank the efforts of all of the first responders who have responded with such courage and dedication, and in many instances, their own homes were destroyed, yet they were out there serving the public. I'd also like to thank the federal government, the government of Alberta, my colleague, the mayor of Edmonton, and the mayor of Wood Buffalo, Canadian Armed Forces, and the Canadian Red Cross, and most of all, to the literally thousands of Canadians who have picked up the phone or gone online to support the Red Cross's efforts to help these men, women, and children during this tragic time. In partnership with Chris Phillips, I'm proud to announce today, Ottawa for Fort Mac, a Western-themed fundraiser that will take place in the Aberdeen Pavilion on June 8th in support of the Fort Mac relief efforts.
I invite you to join us, to continue to make your support for Fort McMurray.
Next week, the theme will be beer and pizza and dress western, and we hope to raise tens of thousands of dollars that will be given to the Red Cross for the work that they will continue to do, because as Chris knows, with family back there, this is just, you know, the fire may be out in a week or two, but the repercussions are going to last a long time. And that community needs our help, just as we need it, the country's help during our ice storm, the people of Lac-Maigantique needed our help during the train derailment. That's what Canadians do, we help one another. And you can't think of a better ambassador for the Ottawa Senators than Chris Phillips. Not only... Not only a great hockey player, but the tremendous work he and Aaron do for so many causes. He's leaving here to go and do a candlelighters event. Aaron is so involved with the Snowsuit Fund, Rogers House, CHIO, the list goes on and on. And it's great to have Chris involved with this event, and I'll ask him to say a few words.
Thanks, Mayor Watson, and thank you very much for reaching out to wanting to put on this event. Thank you to council for your support of this and really the entire city of Ottawa. Every day you read in the paper or hear of generosity, whether it's big or small, going on right here in this city to help victims, evacuees of Fort McMurray. And as a local Fort McMurray, I really appreciate it. It's going a long ways and every part helps. Very excited to announce this today, Ottawa For Fort Mac on June 8th. And it's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to raise a lot of money and help give back. So with country music, beer, and pizza, sounds like a great night and hopefully we get a lot of people out there. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask my council colleagues to come into the circle. We've got a logo that was designed by Don Masters, Ottawa For Fort Mac, a Western Roundup fundraiser. We'll get maybe a group shot with Chris and Roger, if you can help us out there. And just a reminder, tickets will go on sale next week through social media, our website, and it's going to be an opportunity for people to support the residents of Fort McMurray. All right. So what are we going to send here? Chris? Logo? Save it. Save it. Greatest hockey mom. I think they used that. Grandma, come on. Come on in. Colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take a moment to welcome Steve Katalakis, our new city manager. This is his first council meeting. Steve, as you all know, has dedicated his career to improving the lives of Ottawa residents through more than 30 years of municipal service. We're very pleased to have him back, continuing this great tradition. Steve has gained the confidence.
Steve earned the trust and the respect of council over many years of service. His leadership will be considerable in this crucial time in the history of our city.
May 2nd, he has hit the ground running, meeting with many of you, including staff and stakeholders. And Steve's leadership will be a tremendous asset during such an important time in our city's history. Steve, we very much look forward to working with you to build an even better city. Welcome back to the city of Ottawa. Bienvenue. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Concierge Menet.
Present.
Councillor Mydick.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egway.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Neusbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Trenoshenko.
Present.
Sir Cloutier.
Present.
Concierge Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le Coramétan, Monsieur le Maire.
You have the quorum.
On the process verbal pour l'inventaire minutes of the 27th of April, carried. Declaration of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflit d'internet y compris ce décullement de réunion entière. Councillor Mydick.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Councillor Mydick, declare a potential deemed direct pecuniary, cannot say that word, interest in council agenda 31, item P on the bulk consent agenda, transportation committee report 14, veterans parking on remembrance day, as my wife has a veteran's license plate on her vehicle.
Okay. Are there any other conflicts of interest to declare? Communications as presented, regrets, absence. Councillor Eli Elshantiri advises he will be absent from this council meeting. I believe he's in Toronto on behalf of the Police Service Board Association. Motion to introduce reports. Councillor Leaper, seconded by Councillor Moffett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 16, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 14, Planning Committee Report 25, and Transportation Committee Report 14 be received and considered, and that pursuant to subsection 35.5 of the Procedure by Law 2014-441, council receive and consider Planning Committee Report 26.
On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. First, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 16. Rapport numéro 16 du Comité de l'Agriculture des Affaires Rurales. Official plan and zoning flood plain mapping updates phase one. Councillor Harder, rather, Councillor Moffett, seconded by Councillor Harder, has a technical amendment. Councillor Moffett, please.
Thank you. It turns out that there was some incorrect maps in the report, so we now have the right maps in working with the Set Nation Conservation Authority. Therefore, be resolved that council approve that document four be amended by replacing the SNCA map one, Cedar Creek Municipal Drain, SNCA map five, Cedar Creek Municipal Drain, and SNCA map six, Cedar Creek Municipal Drain with the maps attached to this motion, and be it further resolved that pursuant to Planning Act subsection 3417, no further notice be given.
Any questions on the technical amendment? On the amendment, carried? On the report as amended, carried? Next is number two, I'm sorry, Finance and Economic Development Committee, whoops. Sorry. And there's also Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Recommendation, zoning by law 2008-250 as shown in document two. Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. All right, Fedco, my apologies, was not clear. Purchasing review, year in review. There's a technical amendment to this document as well. Councillor Taylor, seconded by Councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas subsequent to consideration by the Finance and Economic Development Committee at its meeting of the 3rd of May 2016, an incorrect version of supporting document five to the report entitled 2015 Purchasing Year in Review was inadvertently included in the Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 14. Therefore, be it resolved that council replace document five of the report entitled 2015 Purchasing Year in Review with the current version, correct version, that was approved by the Finance and Economic Development Committee. That's moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Fleury.
Okay, on the technical amendment, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Item three, stage two light rail trans alignment improvements, carried. Carried. Thank you all. Good discussion at Fedco. Item four, revitalization of Byward and Parkdale markets. We have an amendment. Councillor Fleury, please. Seconded by my, seconded by Councillor Harder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out some anomalies. So the section that we have to change is recommendation nine, that is to be corrected. That is, ask staff of the branch to start a proactive initiative in order to conform to the zoning in the Byward market.
So the, the motion reads as follow, that council approve the report recommendation number eight, be replaced with the following, that the chief security and emergency management proceed with the implementation of the two bookend stalls for the Byward Market building for the area set out in document five of the report at an estimate cost of $100,000 in 2016 for the 2017 market season, subject to the following condition, that the funds to designate and construct the bookend stalls are provided by private sponsors in accordance with the city of Ottawa's corporate sponsorship and advertising policy, on the understanding that should there be a requirement for the city to augment the private funds or advance the funds to ensure timely construction, that these would be provided through the 2016 one-time unforeseen account, and that the bookend stalls are designated and installed to the satisfaction of the chief of security of emergency management and manager of policy development and urban design, that the chief security and emergency management be directed to consult with the Byward Market and Parkdale Market governance core team on proposed standard allocation policies for the bookend stalls, and provide recommendations to the Finance and Economic Development Committee no later than fourth quarter of 2016.
Okay, so Councillor Deens has asked that we hold this, so we'll come back to this item. Next is Development Charge Complaint 173175 Armstrong Street. Plaint concern la redévance d'aménagement de sept trois et sept cinq rue Armstrong. Carried. Dissent by Blay and Leaper. And Fleury? No, okay. Zoning by law amendment 256 Rita Street and 211 Besserer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hold the item, I just have a comment to make.
Okay, come back to that. Item number seven is designation of Kilmorey 21 Withrow Avenue under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. Designation de Kilmorey, Vantaine Avenue, Withrow. Carried. Dissent by Councillor Blay. Item eight, designation of the former synagogue at 375 King Edward. Councillor Neusbaum, seconded by Councillor Fleury, has an amendment. Councillor Neusbaum, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion that proposes to slightly amend the statement of cultural heritage value to acknowledge the important role that the Église Adventiste de Septième Jour has played as the tenant of the building and owner of the building since 1998.
Any discussion on the technical amendment? Carried. On the report as amended, carried. Thank you. A planning committee report number 26. Rapport numéro 26 du Comité de l'Homonymisme. Zoning by law amendment part of 980 Earl Armstrong Road. Modification de règlement de zonage percy de neuf wit zero chemin Earl Armstrong. Carried. A zoning by law amendment 283 Sussex Drive. Modification au règlement de zonage de huit trois promenades Sussex. Carried. Transportation Committee Report number 14. Rapport numéro 14 du Comité de Transports. Use of photo radar in Canadian municipalities. Received. Photo radar on local streets is item number 12. Councillor Brockington, seconded by Councillor Cloutier, has an amendment. Councillor Brockington?
Want to go through this now, or do you envision that there's going to be debate?
We'll do all the amendments to get them on the table and then we'll come back to it because there'll be, people want to speak to it.
I would prefer we just hold the item and come back to it if we can.
Introduce your motion now.
Okay, so there, thank you, your worship. There are two amendments that I'm putting on the floor coming out of the discussions and deliberations that were held at Transportation Committee last week. The first is that city council through the mayor formally requests that the province of Ontario allow the city of Ottawa the option of conducting a pilot project to use photo radar in school zones. The amendment would be, and to add the words, "and" in the vicinity thereof, in accordance with traffic services staff's recommendation. And then it continues with the concurrence of "and/or" at the request of the ward councillor. The second motion, your worship, is that we amend recommendation four to remove the word "local" as far as the circulation goes to members of provincial parliament, so that the outcome would be that it circulated to all members of the provincial parliament. By way of introduction, if I may.
Yeah, we're not, we're going to, we're just doing the amendments.
Put those on the floor. Very well, thank you.
Councillor Blay has an amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is, I think, in keeping with the desire to focus on safety in school zones, that the city of Ottawa requests that the Ministry of Transportation amend regulation to allow school zone signage to act as signage indicating a community safety zone, thereby saving funds, reducing sign pollution, protecting children as they walk to and from school.
Okay, any other amendments on this? And then we'll hold it. Okay, so we're going to come back to that because there are people who would like to speak. The bulk consent agenda, we're removing item P. Councillor Mydick is excusing himself from this debate. I'd like to remove item R, just to say a few words about Max Keeping. Does anyone else have anything they'd want to remove from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda, carried. Just on the Max Keeping Bridge, as you know, this went through the Commemorative Naming Committee. Max, of course, was larger-than-life in our city, did so much for charities, tens of millions of dollars raised. And he was one of the biggest boosters of baseball in the entire city when the Lynx first arrived. And of course, his connection with CHIO on the other side of the bridge and the Cancer Survivors Park just in Alta Vista, I believe, makes the new pedestrian bridge across the 417 that will eventually connect LRT to the Via Rail station and then to the baseball stadium and to the residential community in Overbrook Forbes. I think it's a fitting tribute to a gentleman who is soily missed, but has done so much for our community. So I'd ask for your support on renaming the 417 Coventry Road Bridge the Max Keeping Bridge. Carried? Carried. Thank you. Yeah. And now on item P, which Councillor Mydick has excused himself from. Carried. Thank you. All right. So Councillor Deens would like to speak on revitalization of Byward Market and Parkdale Market.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words on this item because although I represent a suburban neighborhood, I'm also a city councillor, and I think it's really important to recognize the vitality of our downtown neighborhoods for the good of the entire city of Ottawa. And without a healthy and vibrant downtown, without a healthy and vibrant Byward Market, the rest of the city would not be as healthy as it is today. A number of years ago, I had the opportunity and really the pleasure of participating in the Project for Public Spaces workshop in New York City. And I have to say it was a bit of a game changer for me because I came back really with a lot more knowledge about the importance of animating public spaces than I had before I went there and spent those days at that workshop. I think it was a real eye-opener for me about the importance of public spaces, about their role in animating neighborhoods, in bringing people together, in creating vibrancy and life. And it's also an economic, social, and health generator for our communities. So I have to tell you, when I came back, Mr. Mayor, from New York City after participating in that project for a number of days and actually going out in New York City into a park and speaking with people about what works in that particular public space, I came back with my sights firmly fixed on the Byward Market because I could see, having gone through that experience, that there was, it was underperforming. And I remember saying to George Bedard at the time, who was the then councillor, that that great big service parking lot on York Street needs to go.
neighborhood, I'm also a city councillor, and I think it's really important to recognize the vitality of our downtown neighborhoods for the good of the entire City of Ottawa. And without a healthy and vibrant downtown, without a healthy and vibrant Byward Market, the rest of the city would not be as healthy as it is today. A number of years ago, I had the opportunity, and really the pleasure, of participating in the Project for Public Spaces workshop in New York City. And I have to say, it was a bit of a game changer for me, because I came back really with a lot more knowledge about the importance of animating public spaces than I had before I went there and spent those days at that workshop. I think it was a real eye-opener for me about the importance of public spaces, about their role in animating neighborhoods, in bringing people together, in creating vibrancy and life. And it's also an economic, social, and health generator for our communities. So I have to tell you, when I came back, Mr. Mayor, from New York City after participating in that project for a number of days, and actually going out in New York City into a park and speaking with people about what works in that particular public space, I came back with my sights firmly fixed on the Byward Market. Because I could see, having gone through that experience, that there was, it was underperforming. And I remember saying to George Bedard at the time, who was the then councillor, that that great big surface parking lot on York Street needs to go. That is underutilizing some of the most prime space in this entire city. And I can just imagine, like, maybe it's a bit too much of a giant step to imagine taking cars out of the Byward Market, but it's not too much of a giant step for me to imagine taking surface parking out of a prime area of the Byward Market and greening it, making it a public space, animating that space, making it a performance space, making it a gathering space for people. And I say this in the context of being a suburban councillor, because I recognize that that market is a key element of our city. It's a key attractor of tourists, key attractor of people, of businesses, of economics. And so I think, I just wanted to say, as a suburban councillor, I think that moving forward, regenerating, rejuvenating, revitalizing the Byward Market is in all of our interests, and that it should be a priority for this council. And so I salute the work that has been done. I think it's great that you engaged the Project for Public Spaces. I think they're the right people. They know a lot about public markets, and I think they can help guide us. And I would just say, keep the eye on the prize, because we need to do that. It will help the entire City of Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Egli, please.
Right, just a very quick question about Counselor Fleury's motion on the building of the stalls. We had quite a bit of discussion around the funding for this when it was at committee, and we even heard from one of the delegations that they had firmed up private funding. So again, I'm not sure if this is to staff or to Counselor Fleury, but the part of the motion which speaks to the city advancing funds to ensure timely construction, I get that, I understand that, but I assume that we would only do that if we had an agreement in writing from the private funder saying the dollars are there, and I'll get them to you within 30 days, 60 days, whatever, and we would just be pushing the process along more quickly. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. We certainly would have an agreement in place before we advance any monies to, you know, to the private sector.
And I think that's great, and I'll very shortly, I'll just say, I echo everything Counselor Deans said. I think it's a great initiative, and I'm glad to see we found a way to move this forward. Thank you.
Merci. Thank you. Counselor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want, obviously, many of the members were at Fedco and heard what I've said, and I don't want to repeat all of it, but I think it's important, it's an important report for us, highlighted by the comments of my colleagues. This is a foundational document that really can spark the entrepreneurial uniqueness, reinvestments, and also the gem that the Byward Market is for our city and really can be for the future. You're quite right when you say that all the stakeholders have been focal points of it, including the city, but specifically with PPS from New York City, the BIA, the association, the standholders in the area, as well as the Byward Market building leases. So it's been, it's been a work in progress for some years now, and I'm happy to finally say that it's come in front of us at council. I think, again, it's an important foundational element. There's, we're going to see follow-ups to this later in 2016 regarding the governance portion in terms of the representation on the board. And obviously, there is some work that's planned this summer on George Street Plaza, but beyond that, we'll work with our federal and provincial partners to see how we can work at investing in the streetscaping in and around the area. And hopefully, we can continue to see that. It is a term of council priority. Alors, évidemment, c'est un projet qui est important pour nous.
It's a very important project for us and the community and the whole city. The Byward Market appeals to everybody. Everybody has good memories from the market, so it's important for us to prepare its future. This market has experienced many, a lot of things, has a rich history. In each community in Ottawa now, there are public markets. It's a good thing. But what's unique in the Byward Market must be reinvented, revitalized, so there will be a nonprofit group that will be charged to do this.
On this, specifically, Mr. Moser, Mr. Currie, Madame Kenny, who really have led the file internally and worked with my office and with the stakeholders to bring it to what it is today. It's been a lot of consultation, a lot of discussion. We're at the right place, I think. We're in a really good spot. And I invite members of council, if you're interested in the market, there is a consultation this evening that's happening at the overpass between the Rita Center and the bay for what the George Street Plaza will look like. So thank you again for the support, and I want to thank staff for the work.
Great, thank you. So we have a technical amendment by Counselor Fleury, seconded by Counselor Harder with respect to the English and French translation on that. Carried? On the second amendment moved by Counselor Fleury, seconded by myself. Carried? On the report as amended? Carried? And I'll echo the councillor's words. I want to thank Counselor Fleury as well, because the market is both a gem and a challenge to our city, and certainly, he has done a tremendous amount of work to get us to this stage, to help change the governance structure. And along with our staff, who have worked very hard on this, Counselor Fleury deserves a lot of the credit for the heavy lifting. So, félicitations conseillers. Our next item that's been held is the zoning bylaw amendment 256 and 211 Besserer. Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Mr. Mayor, this, I'll be very quick. I'm supportive of the parking amendments. As you know, this is on a main street, and we're a block, two blocks away from Future Light Rail Station. I just want to make a comment, because I hear this often from colleagues and residents, that there's really, in zoning, two portions to Rita Street, the western part of King Edward and the eastern part of King Edward. With the help of colleagues, a few months ago, we've addressed the eastern part, where we're going to see appropriate zoning. But on the western side, so near King Edward, if you're familiar with that area, the metro, the Claridge Towers, the phase one to four that are there, we continue to have an issue with the MD zone. And that's the zone that's in place there. And unfortunately, we're not asked today to vote on that, but I wanted to make an important mention that we're seeing more and more issues with separation distances, with properties being built lot line to lot line, with minimum setbacks. The current phase three and four of Claridge were built with so 16-meter distances between balconies. So you can imagine that when you're eating your dinner, you're right facing the other person. So there's a zoning issue. The applicant here has improved the design, and they have the zoning in place, so I don't want, this has nothing to do with the application, but I do see issues with the MD zone in that area. And now that we know that across the street, there will be development at the metro and at the LCBO, I will ask my colleagues for support on what we can do to improve the zoning, so that we don't see a canyon effect along Rita Street in that portion. Mr. Mayor?
Merci. Es qu'il y a d'autres commentaires? On the report, carried, update. Dissent by Counselor Shirelli. The next item is photo radar on local streets. Radar photographique dans les rues locales. So we have amendments, two amendments that have been tabled. On debate? Push your button, you're first on the list.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just briefly, first of all, I would like to, again, acknowledge and thank the members of public who came to the Transportation Committee last week. We had, as the council report indicates, 15 delegations. 14 spoke in favor, and one did not. One thought there was an issue not of speed in the city but absent-minded drivers. But nonetheless, there was strong support from those who showed up at committee in favor of the implementation of photo radar. And just a reminder, this isn't a debate about implementing photo radar, this is a debate about whether or not we approach the province to ask for permission, to direct the mayor to write a letter and ask for permission. There was a staff report that accompanied, that came to Transportation Committee, which was thorough, which looked at jurisdictions across Canada which have photo radar, and it specifically talked about five zones in Ottawa where photo radar could be considered. It talked about chronic zones that have collisions, chronic zones that have speeding, talked about school zones, it talked about construction zones, and it also referenced zones where traditional police enforcement was dangerous for those officers to be on the streets. So it really highlighted, in particular, five zones where photo radar could be considered moving forward. What we had presented to us at committee was, quite frankly, a weaker, watered-down version. It did not address four of those five zones, and it was sold as a compromise. I don't accept that. I do recognize and appreciate that the motion coming out of that committee focuses on school zones. There's no argument that a segment of our vulnerable citizens, mainly young children, certainly are at risk in school zones, but they're also at risk the minute they leave their house en route to school and on the way back at night. And so, Your Worship, one of my two amendments today that I'm putting on the floor looks to tweak the school zone motion to include wording "in the vicinity thereof." And the reason for that is, there were some examples provided at committee where there's a high concentration of students either walking or riding, which may not be considered a school zone. And so this needs to reflect that. I'm not talking about areas that are a kilometer away, they are just outside the vicinity of a traditional school zone, and I wanted to include them there as well. And I would hope that if this council is okay with not identifying four of the five zones that staff have identified in the report, that there would be willingness to tweak the school zone motion to include the wording that I have provided. Finally, Mr. Mayor, on the other motion that I've put on the floor as well, I just want to say that it's important to inform all members of the provincial parliament about what Ottawa has been debating and what Ottawa passes today. I certainly support and believe our local MPPs need to be copied and notified as well, but I think there's some great value in including all members as well. This is common, we commonly receive motions from other municipalities in Ontario that passed various recommendations, and they're shared with municipalities across Ontario for a variety of issues, and this is no different. So I'm putting that on the floor, Your Worship, and I hope there's strong support for both of them this morning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for staff. I just saw the amending motion this morning, shortly before council, so we haven't had a chance to discuss it in any detail. So the term "in the vicinity of," what does that mean? Does that mean a councillor can come and say, "We want to add four blocks on the way to the school," or are we talking feet or meters? And can you give us some context around that?
Will you get the microphone on, please?
Oh, it's on now, okay, there we go. Mr. Mayor, the way we see vicinity is, school zones, we generally sign between 50 meters and 150 meters from the school. If we were to see that, and we do this today, that there's a generator or so, there's a cross street where a lot of kids are crossing, that's just a bit outside that area, we might extend the school zone by another 50 or 100 meters. But the school zone still needs to be on the road where there's a school.
But when you say "on the road," like, how far on the road? How far down? Because I think there's some unease in the room about how far this might extend what committee approved.
So it would be on the road that the school is located on. So today, we sign the school, sign between 50 and 150 meters. We could extend it to maybe 200 to 250 meters if there's a demand or if there's a reason to do that. We wouldn't do it if that's not the case.
And this question, I guess, might be for you, Mr. O'Connor. So one of the concerns I have about this amendment, or one of the things I would like to see clarified, is it talks about with the concurrence of the ward council, it also talks about with traffic staff's recommendation. One of the nice things about the pilot motion is, we had a baseline, we had a consistent definition of what we were dealing with, it could collect data in a consistent way. So I wouldn't want to see a patchwork approach throughout the city, depending on what the councillor wanted or didn't want in his or her particular ward. So is there a tiebreaker built into this motion? What would that work with? If a councillor came forward and said, "I want to add an additional four or five blocks to what I consider the school zone to be," and staff said, as we've just heard, "Well, we think we can add an extra 50 meters." So what happens then?
Mr. Mayor, as I read this recommendation number one in the motion before you, appreciating that the traffic management expertise, and I think it's implicit in recommendation number one lies with traffic services staff and not my office, I believe that the general definition of the term that is going to be key for this is the word "in accordance," which is generally speaking "in conformity with." So therefore, Mr. Mayor, as the councillor asked, if there was some sort of tiebreaker or something, my impression and my view of it would be that the transit services staff's recommendation would prevail.
Can you use a stronger word than "your view"? In other words, is that what would happen?
It is my legal opinion, Mr. Mayor, that that is what would happen.
Okay, I thank you for that, for that clarification, because I think that's a question that was on a lot of people's minds. How would this actually work? So I've heard what Counselor Brockington has had to say about this particular initiative, and I thank him for putting it on the table. He put it on the table out of a concern for his ward, and that's acknowledged and appreciated. But once it got on the table in front of all of us, it then became a citywide discussion, and not just about what was happening in a particular ward. And I think that's how we have to look at this. To my mind, photo radar is a tool, a tool, not the tool, but a tool in our toolbox, along with traffic calming, along with complete streets, along with police enforcement. It's just one of many elements that we can use. The one thing, and I said this at committee, that we can all agree on, if we can't agree on how to fix it, we can all agree that speeding is a problem. We can all agree that each and every one of us, including the mayor, on a citywide basis, receives a significant number of speeding complaints on a daily and weekly basis, and that's ongoing year to year. So the question really is how we fix it. And as I said, I don't think there's any magic bullet that's going to do it. I think it's an array of options that we need to do. We need to keep on making our toolbox bigger and bigger and giving us those options. And so, for example, the other part of the main motion is gateway sign speed reduction to allow us to, in conjunction with our communities, to reduce speeds in certain areas in a more efficient, a more cost-effective manner. That's another tool we want to put in the box. So to me, the beauty of the pilot is, it addresses the people who are very nervous about it, and it also addresses the people that would love to see it all over town. And it gives us an opportunity with the help of our staff, who I think have done an excellent job so far in providing us a very substantive report on the way things work. It gives us an opportunity to test, and I stress the word "test," another couple of tools or methods that we can utilize to address this pervasive problem in our communities. I think, and I ask the questions I ask, because I think if the motion was Counselor Brockington's original motion, which was essentially ask the province for photo radar anywhere, anytime, that would not be something that would have met the concerns and requirements of the bulk of our communities. It's not something I think that would have sat well with the bulk of the people sitting around this table. But I think we can all acknowledge, it's a problem, we want to fix it, we want to be as creative and flexible as we can be in fixing it, but we don't want to go ahead in a precipitous manner. The last time we had photo radar in this province, it didn't end well. It lasted less than a year because it was everywhere and every, all the time and everywhere, and people didn't like that and didn't want it. We have to take a more cautious approach, we have to look at the data, we have to see how it works. And school zones is a perfect way to do that, because we have them on residentials, we have them on arterials, and we have them on collectors. We can test every kind of road, every kind of street we have in this city, and come back after a fulsome pilot, have the data, and make an informed decision about whether we throw it away, whether we go forward with it in a different way, whether we leave it the way it is. So I will support the amendment on the basis of the answers given by staff, because I still think it keeps it nicely in that pilot approach that was unanimously approved at committee.
Thanks, Counselor, and thank you for those two questions as well. Counselor Chernyschenko, please.
Thank you very much. I have no difficulty supporting Counselor Brockington's amendment nor the motion as a whole. Put me in the category as someone who would have been prepared to go further and faster, although that may be the wrong choice of words.
Or safer.
More broadly, and further. However, I recognize that this is a step. It is neatly... It is neatly defined, it allows us to track and get statistics. It also allows us, should we reach this stage, because we have to acknowledge that this is simply asking for permission from the province at this point. Should we ever get to the point of installing it, it allows us to demonstrate that it is not, as the lingo that is unfortunately out there, "a cash grab." Something like this is only a cash grab if we allow it to become a cash grab, and that's not the sentiment that I hear from any of my colleagues, it's certainly not mine. The intent is not to make this a money raiser. The intent is for us to fulfill our role as defenders of public safety. And I'm going to illustrate that with some figures. I did raise, and here on this school zone, I did raise the fact that slightly outside of a particular school in my ward on a very busy street, you have huge numbers of school-going pedestrians and cyclists, and the actual conditions that we see there currently is a problem. Let me illustrate. When we put up a speed board in this area on the Banks Street Bridge, coming up out of the Glebe, past Lansdowne and into Old Ottawa South near Hopwell Public School, what we found over the nine days of this board being up there was that the vast majority of drivers were between 30 and 45 kilometers an hour in a 40-k zone, well within that up to 5-k or so over. However, embrace yourselves, 141 drivers were traveling between 70 and 125 kilometers an hour in a 40-kilometer zone on a main street in a built-up urban neighborhood. That's only 0.15% of all of the traffic. But if I'm going to engage in a cash grab for 0.15% who are going 70 and above in a 40-k zone, then you can throw that word around, because I can tell you that residents would like to grab a whole lot more than cash from those drivers, but that's not currently what we're asking for permission from, from the premier, and we probably won't get it. So we'll stick right now with, that's the sort of behavior where we would like to heavily fine a driver, get demerit points, and possibly take away their license, because that is not just antisocial, that is outright dangerous. And what that does is not just, for those drivers at that time, create a specific condition, it leaves the sense among people, and this is our own staff's words here, creates not only the impression that all traffic is speeding, but given the pedestrian and cycling activity, that they are traveling in a very dangerous area. And we cannot have that where people, and we get this in our surveys all the time, Mr. Landry knows this from our Lansdowne work before that. What did the survey say? "I am afraid to use this area and use this bridge because of that perception of speed." Most of the time, most drivers are not speeding, but those people are the ones that we need to find a way to stop, and this gives us the tool. It is very close to a school, close enough that it falls within that zone and will allow us to track how well it works in catching that 0.15%. So, for that and all the other reasons, I support this as a city-wide initiative, as we're currently defining it here, or to retrace myself, to ask for permission that we can then implement this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also supporting councillor Brockington's motion here, and it's, you know, after we had our Transportation Committee meeting and we passed our initial motion to have photo radar in school zones, I actually took several days and walked my daughter, cycled her to school. And what I found was this, that on the street, within that school zone, while some cars, you know, could be driving dangerously, they did things like U-turns or backed in, you know, into spots, not watching out for cyclists or kids, not many of them were actually speeding because at that point, you were on a congested roadway. And so, but leading up to the school zone for, you know, I mean, we can have the debate whether it should be a kilometer, half a kilometer, 200 meters, but even for 200 meters, the roadways leading up to the school zone, drivers were driving too fast, and it was frightening to watch. You know, in the downtown, 82% of people who live and work downtown walk to work. That is a lot of people on the sidewalks, and the evidence is clear that reducing speed reduces, and having photo radar reduces fatal collisions. It's evident in Calgary, it's evident in Edmonton, in Winnipeg, across the river in Gatineau, that there are decreases in fatal collisions with photo radar. And yes, it's only part of managing speed, there are many other things that we are doing, that we can do, you know, complete streets, but we don't have complete streets, we have a few. So until we're designing and building our streets so that people drive, drivers drive at a reasonable speed, where if they collide with a pedestrian, they won't cause a fatal injury or a serious injury, then we need things like photo radar. People need to know that they need to slow down. We've got an average of seven pedestrian deaths in the city of Ottawa annually and 341 injuries. And the most vulnerable road users are children and older adults. So, having photo radar in our city, in any area of our city, will reduce pedestrian deaths, it will reduce those serious injuries. And Edmonton has got a Vision Zero policy, and they've got a very interesting website. And on that website, they go out to their residents, and I encourage you to look it up, they ask residents, "How many people do you think are killed on our streets every year?" And they throw out things like, I don't know, 30, 40, 35. And they say, "If we had a policy where we could reduce that, what would be a number that you would be okay with of deaths in the city of Edmonton on our roads?" And people throw out numbers like 5 and 10 and 8. And then the third question came back to the same folks and said, "Okay, how many of those would be okay if they were your family members?" And the answer, across the board, of course, was zero, because we always think it's going to be somebody else. We don't, you know, I'm not a senior crossing Carling Avenue, so it's not likely that, you know, that intersection that's quite dangerous is going to be an intersection where I'm hurt. When we're talking about walking kids to school, cycling kids to school, kids getting off the school bus and walking to school, we have a responsibility to make sure that we are managing speed in those areas so that those kids are safe to get to school. We have a responsibility to broaden that, and one day we will, but in the meantime, you know, the World Health Organization said that the vulnerability of the human body should be a limiting design parameter for the traffic system, and speed management is central to that. So I believe that we have, as a city, a responsibility to make sure that we're using every tool we can, and this is one that I very, very strongly support, because the evidence is clear that it works. Thank you.
Merci. Councillor Cloutier, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. I was going to talk about the data that councillor Chernyschenko brought forth, and I had some data also, but councillor McKenney just made a point very eloquently. Elle a parlé de l'impact de la vitesse sur nous.
She talked about the impact of speed on us, our children, and they're not just figures, they're our dear ones.
...ward where, in simply some signage going up, flex signs or radar signs in the ward, and how it's changed compliance to the speed on Kilborn, for example, from 36% all the way up to 78%. But that means that there's still 22% of the people that are going over the speed limit, and councillor Chernyschenko said that a very small percentage of that go an extraordinary amount over that speed limit with devastating results. And so I'm happy to be the seconder of councillor Brockington's motion, and I will certainly support it. And we know, we all know, that this is simply one tool in the toolbox, because it doesn't address texting and driving, it doesn't address other forms of following too close or aggressive driving, doesn't deal with impaired driving, all issues on our roads, but it is one tool in the toolbox, and an important one. And it shows the commitment of this council to improve things for our community. And so with that, I will, of course, support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Merci. Councillor Leper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am very comfortable supporting councillor Brockington's amendment to the motion. It is important that we're using the right tool for the right job. Photo radar in the immediate vicinity, to councillor McKenney's point, of a school, is not the right tool to address the problem that we have in the immediate vicinity. In the immediate vicinity of the schools, the problem in at least Catherine and I's ward is really inappropriate driving, the U-turns, aggressive driving behavior as people try to drop off and pick up their kids from school. The speeding in Kitchessippi Ward is at some distance from where the school is, still walking routes, still cycling routes for the kids. When I take a look at Fisher Park, the speeding isn't in the immediate vicinity of the school on Holland, it is several hundred meters to the south. It is on Sherwood Avenue, which is several hundred meters away. I could name that for each one of the schools in our vicinity. Connet School, the speeding is not in the vicinity, right in front of Connet Public School on Gladstone, it's in the stretch between Irving and Spadina, significantly further to the east. If photo radar is going to be an effective tool, we're going to need to use it in the right way, and that means we don't limit it to immediately in front of a school where during passenger pickup and drop-off, it's congested and slow anyways. Councillor Brockington's motion would give us the flexibility to ensure that where we do try photo radar in the vicinity of schools, that it's being used in the right place in order to address the right behavior. So I thank councillor Brockington for bringing this nuance to the original motion, echoing my colleagues with respect to how far we're going. I recognize that this is not as far as many of us would like to go. This is a motion that can pass. I am hoping we get strong provincial support. I am very pleased to see the support that our MPP, Yasser Nakvi, in Ottawa Centre, has already provided to it. I'm looking forward to succeeding at the province. It's the first step, but let's right now make sure that we don't pass a motion asking for permission that ultimately isn't going to be as useful for us as it should be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Deans?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When councillor Brockington initially introduced this motion, I really did not know what my constituents thought about the use of photo radar, so I surveyed them to ask their opinion. And I can tell you, I got a huge amount of response, because the public is very interested in this issue. And there were really two camps, with lots of people in both camps, and one of them was in favor of photo radar, and they were in favor for the simple reason that they recognize, as I think everyone around this table recognized, that we have a huge speeding problem in the city of Ottawa, and when people are behind the wheel of the car, they seem to be busy, they seem to be distracted, and they seem to be driving far too fast, and it's causing a hazard on the road. And so the people that believe in photo radar believe that it's a tool and that we should use every tool that we have to slow cars on the streets. That's one camp. But the other camp believe that photo radar is too blunt an instrument, and that the presence of police is far superior in terms of slowing traffic than a camera. A camera has no discretion. They can't look at the reason someone was speeding. Were they speeding up to get out of the way of an emergency vehicle? There's just no discretion, and so, and also you don't know who the driver is. And so, a lot of people feel that it's too blunt an instrument, that it's not the right tool, that it's no substitute for police who have that discretion, and also who, by their very presence, act as a significant deterrent for other speeders. And so, I'm very reluctant to support the widespread use of photo radar in our city, because I tend to agree that this is a blunt instrument. And I also very much agree that we have a speeding problem that we need to wrestle to the ground. The question is, how best do we do that? So to the extent that we would contain a pilot project and find some way of measuring the effectiveness of it and also receiving public feedback, I can see some advantages to doing that. So I would be prepared to go along with the general notion of limiting photo radar program to school zones, because I think we can all agree that there should be zero tolerance for speeding in school zones. So to that extent, I'm willing to go along with it. But I'm worried about this amendment, because I suspect this is really photo radar creep, because then we're going to have to decide where the boundary is, and we're going to have to argue about that. And I'm not sure that for a pilot, we want to get into that. It's that gray area that's going to cause more problems, I suggest, than it's worth, and maybe go outside of my comfort zone in terms of deciding on a pilot for photo radar. So for that reason, I'm not going to support the amendment, but I will support the essence of the motion. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to get clarification on some of the things I've just heard about this, the reason some are supporting the amendment. Mr. O'Connor, I didn't see anywhere in the motion where there's going to be demerit points attached to photo radar. I believe in the past with photo radar, there was strictly a fine, no demerit points?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so there will not be demerit points, as one of the councillors tried to suggest. Also, if staff could tell me, the seven deaths that one of the councillors mentioned, were any of them in school zones?
I'm not sure. I have to go back, and I can get back to you and provide you the exact locations.
It'd be great if you could give us that today, since that's being used as a reason to support the amendment, that it'll reduce seven traffic deaths from last year. And on the amendment itself, Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting it, because I'm hearing already, I've got concerns with the whole motion to begin with, but I'm hearing here in the amendment that other councillors feel that the motion doesn't go far enough, they want to spread it anywhere from a couple hundred meters to kilometers to however far. So I think this is just the start of this discussion, and if we bring it in, it's going to mark the rest of the term, will be on how fast we can expand the use of this new revenue tool. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have to say for now on this.
Thank you, councillor Hubley. Councillor Cadri, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And just a question, a couple of questions to staff. Based on councillor Aglai's question, you mentioned somewhat of a distance, 50 meters to 100 meters. How accurate is that in terms of your projections in terms of the school zone? Is that the real number, or could the number be much higher than that?
Mr. Mayor, the way we see it, it's context to each road and each school, so some may be closer, some may be a bit further, but we also don't want it to be too far away in the terms of the fact that we want the school zones signs to be near schools so people see them, because if you put them so far away that they don't see the school, then it becomes a pointless sign. So we want to ensure that it's within an area that people have an understanding that there's a school and they can actually see that school, or at least are aware of it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Landry. The next question is, in terms of the process, today, as the motion states that we're asking for permission from the province, beyond that, where is this going to go, coming back to council or not coming back to council or committee? Could you explain that for my clarification, please?
Mr. Mayor, so the process would be, if the province were to give the city permission to use photo radar in the city, we would come back to committee with a full report on sort of the guidelines that we would use, following the direction of what we've been talking about today, and then there would be an opportunity for councillors to have a discussion on that before final approval would be done, and then we would start using photo radar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landry. And, Mr. Mayor, just, I will not be supporting councillor Brockington's amendment. The reason why I won't be supporting it is, from day one, I've had that concern about the photo radar. Yes, it's a tool, yes, it's a necessary tool in certain cases where there's speeding going on across the city, and I too am concerned about that aspect of traffic management and traffic control. But my concern has always been, today it starts off in one- But my concern has always been, today it starts off in one particular area, and then tomorrow it's opened up a discussion, as it is happening this morning, across the city or across the neighborhood. And that would be a major concern for me because I think, you know, protection and speeding across the community is important. But we have other tools in our toolbox also, not just photoradar. And photoradar, although it was tried in this province number of years back, really hasn't said to me that it can control speed. What it does do is issue tickets on a regular basis for somebody going over a speed limit, whether it's two kilometers, 10 kilometers. Yes, we can set those parameters, but still it opens up a dangerous discussion. What I would suggest for us today colleagues is to leave the motion as is from the committee, go forward with it. Once we get the permission from the province to possibly get photoradar in the city of Ottawa, then as Mr. Landry's mentioned, he will come back with a report to city council, and we will discuss that even further. But at the present time, I'm not opening the door any further than where it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have a question. But first of all, I want to say, I think we have to be careful with this, it doesn't become the new speed humps, the way to manage traffic by putting speed humps on every major road and anywhere in the city, et cetera, because it very much could be. And I address that as a concern. It should be, all of us, I haven't heard anybody say differently, that this is a way of trapping people and sticking our hands in their pocket because they've done something illegal. We shouldn't have a problem if they are doing something illegal, and I frankly don't. I've said I would like to have a camera on every single intersection and every single arterial road in Barhaven because I know that would make it safer. But we're starting with the school zones because all of us recognize that we have problems in our school zones. And less and less kids are being bused now, and more and more kids are on bikes and they're walking. We need to make sure that they're safe. And we don't have the capacity to increase the police services budget to have enough officers that be parked at every one of our schools. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of schools across our city. So this is very much about safe traffic for people in the community, in the school areas. I wanted to ask you, what does the dollars look like that you're planning on putting in the budget vis-à-vis the number of photoradar units that you could purchase with that? Just to have a realistic idea.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, that's a bit too early to talk about it. It depends on how many we want to have installed. I think that would be talked about when we do our follow-up report in terms of costs. Since we don't have photoradar here in Ontario...
Sorry? I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. In terms of, what I was saying is that I think that's something that we would talk to in our report that we bring forward to committee once and if the province gives us permission to do it. It's a little premature at this point to talk about the costs and...
But actually, it's not because I think that we're going to have to realize the fact, and this is a concern I have. We have 23 wards in our city. And I think back to the pilot project that Counselor Blay brought forward, and it was a good one, and it gave us information that allowed us to take the next step. And that was with his school bus, the camera on the school bus. And I remember, I don't know, I don't think, I think eight of you weren't here when we had that discussion, but the discussion was, well, me, I have a problem. I can, I remember Counselor Wickelson right beside me going, well, I have a problem. It became the me too. I must have it because you have it. And yet, really what we need is to have the pilot that is going to show whether or not the initiative has value for the purposes we all want it. So I want to caution everyone that just because it's not going to be, you know, like a pot in every stove or whatever the old sayings, where I can't even remember them right now. But the fact is, all 23 of us, it's not logical to think that we will. So I think that rationally, rather than get down into the weeds of our wards, which is very easy to do when you're political, we need to look at this as how we're going to get the most information. Should we have a school in the downtown? Yes. Should we have a school in the suburb? Yes. Should we have a high school? Should we have an elementary school? Doesn't matter that we have four boards, we don't have to cover all of those. What does the Alta Vista area look like? And if you do the Alta Vista area, what else do you not have to do? And do a really, really super job with the support of police and other things that we can manage financially and with the operationally and with the workforce that we have. That information will come back. And just like we make decisions at budget every year on adding adult crossing guards, we therefore would make the decision based on a list of, okay, this is how we're rating it, we have a rating system now, and we'd be using real data after we get that permission. So that would be my recommendation. I'm going to, I didn't support, even getting to this point, I was the only one that didn't because I personally thought that the horse was coming before the cart, and I didn't see a need to do a lot of work without having to write. But I will support the report. I think that more thought has gone into it because I think that as long as we stick to why we are on board for this, the public will be supportive of us, and that's important. I'm not going to support Counselor Brockington's amendments. I think that they may be ones that we support, but that will be after we have the pilot project approved and comes back after a year of reporting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Harder. Counselor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. I want to point out that first of all, if all of this passes today, this does not implement photoradar. What implements photoradar is subsequent decisions that will be made by council. However, we're asking to conduct a pilot project. And if you look at the history of pilot projects in this city, I don't remember one case where we've had one department implement a pilot project and then evaluate that pilot project as having been a failure. So I know in some cases, in the OrgaWorld pilot in Counselor Deans' ward, the pilot went on for, what, nine years? And then we were a success, and then we moved on from there. So if we get on the pilot project track, we're likely ending up with full implementation. I share the concerns of Counselor Deans and the residents I've spoken to who are very concerned that the temptation on the city to creep and expand photoradar beyond the school zones is something that we will not be able to resist, that this is really the municipal equivalent of a bag of potato chips. We say we're going to have just one, but the bag is going to be gone. So I think it's, this is a time when we should start thinking about how we limit our use of this. In city of Edmonton, their normal speeding ticket issuance was around 3,500 a year. Two years after implementation of photoradar, they're at 66,000 tickets. And everyone says, oh, this isn't a cash grab. But guess what? The cash they brought in was equivalent to almost a 4% tax increase in this city. That's enormous. So we don't want to head that direction. I don't think anyone at this point wants to, but we also don't want to put ourselves in the occasion of sin where we're going to be misusing enforcement as a budgetary tool for the city. When we control speed, especially in school zones and actually in any zone, I think the best way to do it is by police officers. Police officers issued, exercise discretion. They decide where speeding is unreasonable and should warrant a charge. They decide where there is a valid excuse, and they help the system with that. And secondly, one of the most common ways that major crimes gather evidence and are solved is when police pull over someone for a routine speeding stop and discover somebody who's wanted on some sort of issue or somebody who has evidence related to a major crime. You don't get that from a camera. Police also, when they pull over someone, will be able to smell alcohol. That camera doesn't do that. They'll be able to witness if someone is unstable at the wheel, and they'll be able to deal with that. Police also can deal with cars that may not be technically speeding, but they're acting erratically. The camera can't do that. And so the other part, the other piece is education. Police officers, when they pull over someone for speeding, can explain the reason that this violation is important. But probably the biggest deterrent is when you're driving down a road and you see someone is pulled over by the police, that is a deterrent to everybody driving down that road. Nobody can tell if a camera flicked and if two weeks or a couple months later, somebody receives a ticket in the mail. So on the principle of how you correct behavior, photoradar misses the boat because people aren't told immediately that they were in violation, they don't remember the circumstances, and all of the elements that go to correcting behavior are missing except for the city receiving money. And so basically, I think we had a proposal coming out of committee and doesn't even hit council before there's an attempt to expand it. So that's the piece I'm afraid of. So I'm not going to support the amendment, that's for sure.
Thanks, Counselor Shirelli. Counselor Newsbaum, please, and then I believe Counselor Brockington would like to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd start by saying, if eating more potato chips could save the lives of more citizens of our city, I'd voluntarily eat more potato chips. I may have to walk or bike a bit more to burn off those actual calories, but I'd be willing to do it. You know, I think it's important because, of course, a lot of stats are thrown around, and the Edmonton example is an interesting one, and there's no question that there were additional fines issued during the experience of that city. But I'm looking at a chart from the city of Edmonton that indicates between 2006 and 2014, the period during which photoradar was in effect, the number of fatalities and injuries per 100,000 people went from over 1,000 in 2006, 1,113, down to 420. So given that there was a two-thirds reduction in the number of fatalities and injuries, and given that the money collected was used for additional traffic safety initiatives, I guess I don't necessarily see a problem with the fact that that was a system that was in place. It seems to have been a win-win situation for the safety and health of residents of that city. More broadly, and like Counselor Deans', when the original motion was put forward, I didn't have a lot of knowledge about this issue, so I went away and did the research. And I guess the good thing about the story is the research is unequivocal. So when you look at all of the major systematic reviews that have been done by Cochrane, by the British Medical Journal, the evidence looking at literally dozens and dozens of studies is that in every case, fatalities and injuries are reduced, speeding is reduced, the outcome is positive. We know the police can't be everywhere. We know that speeding isn't the only issue on our roads. But we have available, and we have before us, the option to use a tool, which has been demonstrated time in and time out, to reduce the number of injuries of people living in our cities. So for that reason, I think the first thing we have to ask is, is this a useful tool? And the answer is clearly yes. I think it's important to note that when Counselor Brockington's original motion, you know, prior to 24 hours before going to committee, it had a much broader approach. So I think accusing the mover of changing something that had been discussed at committee is not fair. The replacement motion came shortly before the meeting started. Most of the delegations who had signed up, had signed up to speak on the original motion. So while it's true that this is a small amendment to the replacement motion, it is a significantly scaled back version of the original motion that was put forward to council some time ago. So for that reason, I don't think it's fair to accuse the mover of engaging in some sort of fast work. I think the idea is, there was a replacement motion that came out of the committee, there's a recognition that it has limited value for those children, including mine, who bike or walk to school, and only in the final stages of their walk or bike are they in a school zone. My youngest child has a 700-meter bike ride to school. It's in and out of school zones. Much of that is outside. Why shouldn't she be privy to the prevention of speeding in the 100 or 200 meters in which she's not in a school zone before she actually gets there? So I think this is a practical way of respecting the fact that there was reluctance to go whole hog. We're limiting the pilot project to school zones in the vicinity thereof. Again, it's a practical way of acknowledging that you may have children walking or biking to school who are endangered on a path, who slightly outside a school zone. We wouldn't want to be the victims of a collision or a fatality resulting from a speeding parent. It could be a speeding parent driving their child to school. So with that, I will be supporting the motion, encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. To wrap up, Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship. Just to, given that, I hope this is the last time I address this matter, I wanted to address a few things that I've heard. First of all, when I first gave notice way back in February, I did not go through committee. And I chose to give notice of motion at council because only two days before I did that, Mayor John Tory, with the premier standing beside him, indicated that he would like to pursue this matter for the city of Toronto. And it was my understanding and belief that if Ottawa was going to be considered at the same time that the premier was considering Toronto, that it was best to give notice as soon as possible. And my staff and I had been doing research for many months, and it was our intention all along to come to committee in the spring. But I chose then and there in February to give notice, knowing that we were going to have a full month before we met again on March 23rd, and councillors could consult and research the item and speak with their constituents. So then council sent this back to committee, and as we know, on May 4th, the committee had a fulsome discussion as well. And I appreciate, again, the members of public who came out. My, again, original motion was just seeking permission. I did not define where we would put it, the criteria, what the threshold would be, how big the signage would be, where it would be allocated, because simply I thought we need to ask permission first. And if and when we receive permission, we would then go through a comprehensive process where we would define criteria, we would have public engagement, and so there was no intent there to circumvent that important process as well. Again, I'd like to reemphasize and reinforce that our staff, in the staff report that came to committee, recognized five distinct zones. We are choosing to proceed with this pilot in school zones. We are not going to focus on zones that our staff know have chronic speeding. We're not going to go in zones where we have chronic collisions. We're not going to go in zones where construction workers are putting their safety and lives at risk. And we know this city has multiple construction zones. And we also know, having spoken with members of the OPS, that there are areas where it is just too unsafe, too dangerous for an officer to stand out on the main road and enforce traffic. Photoradar would be ideal in those circumstances. We're not putting their life at risk to do that enforcement. There are just some cases where police enforcement is not possible. And members of council know that I've been quite vocal with the police because I would like to see more resources. I would like to see more enforcement. And I do believe in many cases, having an officer is the best option. So I'm not, this is not an either-or discussion. We need police. We need police to enforce traffic and speeding in Ottawa. This is not looking to substitute that. But photoradar, I do believe there are many areas where photoradar could be the best enforcement tool. We've looked at traffic calming as well. I'm a huge proponent of traffic calming, but there are just some times where it's not as effective as other options. And many of you said the photoradar could be an additional tool. I do believe that. This is not the only tool. This is not the silver bullet to our speeding problems that we all admit exist. Finally, to the amendment. This is a minor tweak, and this is not photoradar creep because any expansion of photoradar, I will assume will have to come back to committee and council. If we are going to look at other zones in the future, I expect that there would be that democratic process, and we would vote on that. I think I have articulated well enough that school zones isn't good enough, that there are routes that children take, Counselor Harder mentioned this today, that there is less transportation being offered, more children out on the streets. Why would you not support this? Why would you not support the amendment? Our own staff have said, this isn't going to be a kilometer, a couple kilometers, this is hundreds of meters in the vicinity of schools. And it's not customized to every family's route to school, but those main routes or paths that children walk or bike to would be... paths that children walk or bike to would be looked at, again, with the discretion of the ward councillor and staff as well. That will all be discussed. So Mr. Mayor, I think this is a very reasonable amendment. I would like the two amendments voted on separately, please. I would like a recorded vote on the first amendment. And again, I think this is a minor tweak and I'm asking my colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I would like to offer a couple of comments on this debate. I would urge members of council to vote against both one and two of Counselor Brockington's motion for a couple of reasons. Let me deal with number two first. To send it to all MPPs, as a former MPP, when I got a resolution from the township of Wawa, it went in the recycling bin. It has no impact. We're better to deal with our local MPPs. Counselor Leeper mentioned that Yasir Nakvi has been working on this file. So I just think we'd be wasting our time sending it to all MPPs. Secondly, I thought there was a fair compromise that was reached at Transportation Committee. There was a general consensus that school zones would be a good sensible pilot project to curb and catch speeders. And I share Counselor Deans' comments that, you know, in the vaguely worded, "in the vicinity thereof." I don't know what that means. Is that a block, two blocks? We've heard 150 meters. It ends up being a councillor wanting it and pushing staff and staff folding. I think what we had before was a much more sensible, defined set of criteria. We know what school zones are considered under law. And I would urge you not to support this resolution. Stick to what the Transportation Committee came up with. I think our staff feels certainly more comfortable with that. And the other thing to keep in mind, I think Counselor Harder addressed this, folks, we're not going to be ordering 10,000 photo radar cameras for every single street. I heard some people here talk about, well, my child goes down this route, why not have one there? Well, why not have one over on that street? This is a pilot. We don't even know if the province is going to give us permission. When Counselor Brockington said, I hope this is the last we talk about it, it isn't because we've asked for something. If we're given the power, we'll have to have this discussion. But this at least sets the parameters that we can tell our constituents where we're prepared to go so that it does not turn into a cash grab, as we saw with Counselor Shirely's stats on Edmonton, and it doesn't become a fixed-to-budget problem in the future, but it acts as a deterrent for people not to speed in areas such as school zones where some of our most vulnerable residents, namely children, are dashing out of the bus. Maybe they see a friend across the street and they want to rush to see them in the schoolyard and the tragic consequences of someone traveling too far. So we have, I'll ask for yays and nays on both. So we'll do first with the recommendation number one of Counselor Brockington's motion. Yays and nays, please.
Counselor Blay?
No.
Counselor Shirely?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor DeRusse?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Counselor Newsbaum?
Yes.
Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Elshantiiri? Counselor Egli?
No.
Concier Flery?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
You can't vote twice, Catherine.
I'm so anxious. Yes. Counselor Deans?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Middick?
No.
Concier Minet?
No.
Concier Clitier?
Oui.
Counselor Kakish?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson? Counselor Moffett? Mayor Watson?
No.
Eight yays, 14 nays.
And yays and nays on number two?
Counselor Blay?
So this is, so this is the resolution sending our recommendations to all MPPs. My point is, that's not necessary. I think we deal with the local MPPs.
Counselor Blay?
No.
Counselor Shirely?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor DeRusse?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Chernoshenko?
No.
Counselor Newsbaum?
Sure.
Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Elshantiiri? Counselor Egli?
No.
Concier Flery?
No.
Counselor McKenney?
Yes.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Middick?
No.
Concier Minet?
No.
Concier Clitier?
Oui.
Counselor Kakish?
I don't want it in the recycling box, no.
Counselor Wilkinson? Counselor Moffett?
Maybe we'll actually do something, yes. Sorry, that was a yes.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Seven yays, 15 nays.
So on the committee recommendation that's before us?
Mr. Mayor, there's a second amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Counselor Blay has a supplementary motion. This is with respect to signage. Counselor Blay.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion that's endorsed by staff and is a continuation of council policy to effectively allow for the school crossing zone signage, the school zone signage to act as community safety zone signage, saving us money and avoiding sign pollution and making everything easier to understand.
Dissent by anyone over there? Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Dissent?
Dissent?
Yeah.
All right. So on the report as amendment, carried? Dissent by Counselor Hubley and Shirely. Okay. Next is disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority received. Motion to adopt reports. Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Moffett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved that Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 16, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 14, Planning Committee Reports 25 and 26, and Transportation Committee Report 14 be received and adopted as amended.
Motions of which notice has been previously given. As you know, Counselor Elshantiiri put forward this motion, seconded by Counselor Tierney, with respect to amendments from the Highway Traffic Act. And Counselor Elshantiiri is not here, so I'm moving that we defer this to the council meeting of May 25th so Counselor Elshantiiri can properly introduce his motion. Carried? Thank you. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Counselor Flurry, seconded by Counselor Deans, with respect to Health and Fitness Day because of the timetable on suspension. Carried? Counselor Flurry, please.
This is a yearly event. We support a national active participation day.
Health and Fitness Day. It's the same promotion that we offer every year, basically two-for-one in our facilities. And the general manager of Parks, Recreation and Culture wanted to make sure that we could properly advertise the Triad programs and I Love Two programs ahead of the day. So that's, that's why we were going through committee route, but decided to go through today's motion.
Okay, on the motion. Carried? Thank you. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? No? Okay. Next is a notice of motion by Counselor Deans, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Deans, please.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to just read the resolved to the whole thing?
Whatever you like.
I'll just read the, we're going to discuss it two weeks from now, so it's therefore a bit resolved that Ottawa City Council declared June 2016 to be seniors' month in the city of Ottawa. It's moved by, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson.
Okay, and we'll deal with that the next council meeting? Counselor Harder?
Because Wilkinson isn't here.
Yeah. Okay, our next notice of motion is by Counselor Chernoshenko, seconded by Counselor Egli, please. If you'd introduce it, Counselor Chernoshenko.
Thank you very much. And this is a very long and extensive motion and I won't even ask you if you want me to read the whole thing because I don't think any of us do. This stems from the Blue Dot movement, which many of you will have already heard about, chatted with people. It's essentially a movement to have enshrined in the Canadian Constitution, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, the rights to a healthy environment. That is, of course, a very, very long process, but the idea is to start with cities endorsing this as a principle. It's something that over 130 Canadian cities have already signed onto and you'll see in the fairly extensive description there what's involved in it. This would simply be, when we debate it at the next council meeting, a discussion of writing a letter in support of this movement and helping to further that idea of all having the right to live in a healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next notice of motion is by Counselor Middick, seconded by Counselor Flurry. Counselor Middick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just a notice of motion for the upcoming race weekend to declare, therefore be resolved, the city council declare May 26, 2016 to May 29, 2016 to be race weekend in the city of Ottawa.
Okay, thank you. We'll deal with that at our next meeting. The next notice of motion for our next meeting is moved by Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Brockington. Counselor Leeper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Westboro Fuse is the new street festival that will happen in Westboro, June 10 until 12. In order to allow for setup, I'm asking that we get permission to close one short block of Winona Avenue outside of the normally permitted hours. It would be a Friday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other notices of motion to be dealt with at a subsequent meeting? Okay. Motion to introduce bylaws, please. Motion pour transprésentation de règlement. Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Moffett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, third reading and three readings be read and passed.
Confirmation bylaw, règlement de ratification, concier Leper, s'il vous plaît.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of 11th May, 2016.
Carried? Carried? We have one written inquiry. Counselor Newsbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bike share programs are becoming an increasingly popular way to facilitate cycling for visitors and residents alike. The National Capital Region saw the introduction of a new bike share provider in 2015, the success and potential expansion of which could benefit the city of Ottawa and its citizens. Could staff please provide an analysis of municipal policies on encroachment and other fees charged, as well as funding provided to bike share providers in other jurisdictions in North America? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Adjournment. Counselor Leeper, please.
Thank you. That the proceedings of the city council meeting of 11th May, 2016 be adjourned.
Carried? Merci. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.